The session is now called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the national anthem. Everybody is requested to remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Everybody is requested to remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Everybody is requested to remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Everybody is requested to remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Everybody is requested to remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Everybody is requested to remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Everybody is requested to remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Everybody is requested to remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Everybody is requested to remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Everybody is requested to remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Everybody is requested to remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Majority Leader.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is granted. The Secretary General is hereby directed to call the rolls of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives: Abaya, Abayon, Abiliyanoza, Abu, Abueg, Yes, sir. Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilak, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Butokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meribida, Brosas, Bulut Piktang, Kagas, Calderón, Kalik Sorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casu Franz, Casu Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Seravica, Seriles, Chávez, Ko, Kuwanko, Juliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Usalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, De Venzor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimaporo Dula, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Enverga, Erise, Eregel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Everdone, Pariñas, Fernando, Ferer Juliet, Ferer Luis, Ferion, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, García Gwendolin, García Jose, García Albano, Gari Richard, Gari Charon, Besataya, Etillan, Ron, Guana Cristina, Gomart, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alosós, Javier, Ko, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limke Chong, Lubrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodatous Suarto, Magodatous Sanjit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Milliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Maleniaon, Guominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Ramisias Agabás, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramirisato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivelia, Roapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Máximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roqueary, Roque Ruelio, Saktalan, Sagarbaria, Salí, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Santoval, Santos Rejto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabinyano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singzon, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Rasyo, Suárez, Siel Barado, Tambunting, Tarangelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shiri, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolintino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Turabinataman, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Caterra, Veloso, Vergara, Villaperte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milesho, Yap Victor, Yu, Somor Marcarmen, Somor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri. The speaker is present. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 232 members responded to the call.
With 232 members responding to the call, the Chair declares a quorum.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 35 dated October 10, 2017, and also Journal Number 36 dated October 11, 2017.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we greet the guests of the Honorable Speaker Pantalyon Alvarez. They are from the Municipal Budget Office of Tagum City. They are as follows: Arkady Ilanan, Norhania Disoma, Georgalin Romanilios, Eduardo Eugenio Junior, Laila Raymundo, Jesús Asidoy, Jeanette Quihada, Emeline Tuzay, Evelyn Tapá, Karen Gentiles, Rowena Briz, Estela Suaybagyo, Claire Ann Maghinay, Arnold Asoy, Florenti Bareda, Isadore Kuwanko, Manuel Handogan Junior, Max Alvin Adkol, Jolito Sarno, Elsa Tapat, Merinol May Sánchez, Reynaldo Tapat, and Christ Carl Tapat.
The guest of the Honorable Speaker Pantalyon Alvarez is hereby requested to rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, likewise, may we greet the guests of the distinguished lady from the Second District of Zambalis, the Honorable Chair Del Osomontalia. This is a delegation from the Tagaibaka Kung, and they are led by Ibalan Ness, Luilin Echiveri, Mel Cinco Bilbao, and Alaisad Dragin Bautista, Carlo Josafat, and Jose Mosse.
Please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up reference of business and bills on first reading, and upon motion approved, kindly direct our Secretary General to read the titles and the numbers of the measures.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bills and resolutions on first reading.
Reference of Business Bills on First Reading, House Bill 6606, Converting the Shargao DC Hospital, Representatives Matugas and Alvarez Pantalyon.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6609, Providing Benefits and Programs to Strengthen, Promote, and Develop the Philippine Startup Economy System, Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 6610, Providing Aggravating Circumstance When the Victim of a Crime is a Senior Citizen, Representatives Datol, Dasa, and De Vera.
To the Committee on Revisions of Laws.
House Bill 6611, Declaring February 17 as an Official Non-Working Holiday in the Whole Province of Southern Lede, Representative Mercado.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 6612, Providing Medical Scholarships to Qualified Students in All Municipality, Representative Siel Barado.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 6614, Mandating More Stringent Policy in Granting Individual Permit to Carry Firearms, Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 6615, Amending Section 285 of Republic Act 7160, Representative Makapakalaroyo.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6616, Creating a Barangay to be Known as Barangay Poplasión B., Representative Tejada.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6622, Granting Civil Service Eligibility to Government-Paid Personnel Who Have rendered at least 12 consecutive years of efficient service, Representative Almario.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 6623, Prohibiting Private and Public Schools from Disallowing Students with Delinquent tuition fees to Take the Midterm or Final Examinations, Representative López Carlo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 6624, Allowing the Conversion of Municipality into Component City, Representative Ramiresato.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6626, Converting the Orani DC Hospital, Representative Roman.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6627, Upgrading the Benefits and Incentives of Barangay-Tanod Members, Representative Alihano.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6628, Requiring Country of Origin Labeling on Prescription and Over the Counter Drugs, Representative Alihano.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 6629, Requiring All Government Agencies, Instrumentalis, LGs, and GOCs and Private Establishments to Use Security Watermark Paper, Representative Alihano.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 6630, Providing for Highway Safety Program, Representative Alihano.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 6631, Including Party List, Representative the List of Public Officers, Representative Alihano.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reports.
House Bill 6635, Amending Section 46 of Republic Act 8749, Representative Barinho.
To the Committee on Ecology.
Resolution, South Solution 1408, Direct the Committee on Muslim Affairs to Mediate Between the DBM, the ARMM, Representative Dimaporo Khalid.
To the Committee on Muslim Affairs.
House Solution 1409, Direct the appropriate committee to assess the administrative relationship between deputy armed and deputy central office, Representative Dimaporo Khalid.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1410, Expressing profound condolences on the demise of Batanes Congresswoman Henedina Arabad, Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1414, Congratulating, Commending the Jesus's Lord Church Worldwide, Representatives Villanueva, Lasatin, and Yap Victor.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1415, Expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of former Deputy Speaker, Representative Henedina Razon Arabad, Representatives Kimbo, Belmonte, several others.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1416, Urging the DOTR, PNR, and NLLRC to immediately restore, rehabilitate, and reshoot the operations of railway systems from Manila to Northern Luzon, Representatives Batawil, Espino, Siel Barado, several others.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Solution 1417, Direct the appropriate committee of the House to inquire on the alleged mass migration of private school teachers, Representative Vergara.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1422, Commending, Congratulating the UPD Liman College of Law, Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1423, Congratulating, Commending the DND through its Secretary Honorable Delpin and Lorenzana, Representative Alihano.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Solution 1424, Conferring the Congressional Medal of Achievement to Businessman Icon Mr. Washington Washington Ship, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1425, Expressing profound condolences to Business Icon Mr. Washington Washington Ship, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1426, Direct the proper House committee to investigate the 50 pesos additional charge for paper billing of telecommunications companies, Representative García Gwendolin.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1427, Expressing the appreciation of a grateful nation to Cardinal Ricardo J. Vidal, Representative Delmar.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1428, Expressing profound condolences of the House on the demise of the first female secretary of the deputy, Dr. Lourdes Reyes Kisumbing, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1429, Expressing profound condolences of the House on the demise of MTRCB board member Mr. Manuel Maningborlazar, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1430, Expressing profound condolences of the House on the demise of veteran actor Mr. Ramon Hill Chingoy Alonso, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1431, Expressing profound condolences of the House to Sebu Art Bishop Emeritos Ricardo Cardinal Vidal, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1432, Calling for an immediate investigation into the legality of Deputy Order Number 38 Series of 2017, Representative Tiño.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1433, Direct the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries to inquire into the recently reported improper allegedly illegal act of tax tradings of certain key officials of SSAS, Representative Vardone.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1434, Calling for the House Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability to inquire on the alleged conflict of interest and property dealing of SSAS executives, Representative Sarate.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Joint Resolution Numbers 16 to 19, Authorizing the Increase in Base Pay of Military and Uniform Personnel in the Government, Representatives Bepis, Alonte, Alvarez, Pariñas, Suárez, Nograles, and Yap.
To the Committee on Appropriation.
Message from the Senate, Message dated 11 October, Estating the necessity of immediate enactment of Senate Bill Number 1592.
To the Committee on Rules.
Messages from the Senate. Message dated October 11, Informing that the Senate even date approved the Conference Committee Report of the Bi-Canal Conference Committee on Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 1466 and House Bill 6016.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated October 12, Informing that the Senate on October 11 approved the Conference Committee Report of the Bi-Canal Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 1465 and House Bill 670.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications Letter dated August 31 of Alan S. Borremio, Regional Director, DPWH.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter dated 9 September of Nino Raymond B. Alvina, OIC Executive Director, DUEF.
To the Committee on Appropriation.
Letter dated 14 September of DUEF Gulingundo, OIC, BSP.
To the Committee on Transport and Appropriation.
Letter dated 14 September of DUEF Gulingundo, OIC, BSP.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
2016 Accomplishment Report of the DFA.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs. To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
Letter dated September 19 of Ligia S. Adoremos Director 3, Kowa.
To the Committee on Appropriation.
Letter dated September 20 of Michael R. Bacani, OIC Regional Director, Kowa.
To the Committee on Appropriation.
Committee Report Support Numbers 456 and 457, House Bill Number 6607 and 6608.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 458 on House Resolution 1411.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 459 on House Bill Number 6613.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Numbers 460 and 473 and House Resolution Numbers 1418 and 1421.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 461 on House Resolution 243.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Numbers 460 to 470 on House Bill Number 6617, 6621, 2849, 639, 1955, and 1574.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 471, House Resolution Number 1419.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 472 on House Bill Number 6625.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Numbers 474 and 476 on House Bill Numbers 6632 and 6634.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 475 on House Bill Number 6633.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 477, House Bill Number 6649.
To the Committee on Rules.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
I move that we acknowledge my guests who are in the gallery this afternoon, US State Senator from Georgia, Senator Emanuel Davy Jones, together with his son Emanuel Davy II.
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, would also like to recognize the guests of Representative from Akbayan Partelist, Representative Tom Villarín, the delegation from the different organizations, Youth for Mental Health Coalition, Student Councils Alliance of the Philippines, National Youth Commission, National Police Commission, Philippine Psychiatric Association, Psychological Association of the Philippines, Alliance of the Philippine Families for Mental Health, and other advocates of mental health from various schools, universities, and organizations in the Philippines.
Please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill Numbers 6589, 6578, 6288, 6452, 6425, 6517, 6573, and 6574, as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, with leave of House, I move that we take up bills on third reading.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up on third reading House Bill Number 6452, and upon motion approved, kindly direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure, and thereafter call the roll for the nominal vote.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 6452 and call the roll for nominal of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 6452, Announcing a National Mental Health Policy for the purpose of enhancing the delivery of integrated mental health services, promoting and protecting the rights of persons utilizing psychiatric, neurologic, and psychosocial health services, appropriating funds therefore. Roll Call of Members, consideration House Bill Number 6452. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Akosta, Akosta Alba, Ajong, Advingula, Agraw, Agabau, Aglipaybiliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantallón, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magseisai, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Belisciano, Belmonte Jose Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulutpectang, Cagas, Calderon, Calixrubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Casofrants, Casofedinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Ceravica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cuamco, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuah, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datal, Dasa, Deusus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Del Osario, Del Osomontalia, Dimoporo Dula, Dimoporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga. Erise, Rigel, Ermitaboain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Verdone, Parias, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Fre Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendulin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachalian, Heron, Guanacristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Alasos, Javier, Co, Congun, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin.
Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Edsel Lagman is hereby recognized.
I vote yes for this measure, and I reserve my right to file in writing the explanation of my affirmative vote.
Any objection? There are being none. The motion is approved.
Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Lee, Limkey Chong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benhor, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Leola, Macapalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatus Huarto, Mangodatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malenyaon, Guaminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisysagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rudiges Isidro, Rudiges Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Harry, Roque Roelho, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Santoval, Santos Repto, Sarmito Cesar, Sarmito Edgar, Sabillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Suansing Strilita, Suansing Urasho, Suarez, Sielvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shiny, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Turabinataman, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Unico, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Puerte, Villanueva, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milesejo, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora Marcamen, Samora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred twenty-three affirmative votes, no negative vote, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 6452 is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up on third reading, House Bill Number 6571, and please direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measure, and thereafter call the roll for the nominal vote.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 6571, and thereafter call the roll for, to consider the bill on third reading.
House Bill Number 6571, An Act Establishing a Medical Scholarship Return Service Program for Deserving Students and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Roll call of members, consideration, House Bill Number 6571. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinumag Seisai, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte José Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Vernos, Bertis, Viason, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catamco, Caetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Ciriles, Chávez, Chepeco, Ko, Cojuanco, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisólogo, Kuwa, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesús, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, Dimapora Abdullah, Dimapora Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Regel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Periol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentevelia, Garbin, García Guendulin, García Uc, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gatsalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio Dom, González Fernando, Goroceta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Ko, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Sadid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Viní, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiya Sagabás, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Máximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roqueari, Roque Roello, Sacdalan, Sacarbaría, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Zambar, Zandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabelliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Horacio, Suárez, Sielbarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Trabinataman, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Unico, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milesejo, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora Marcamen, Samora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred twenty-three affirmative votes, zero negative vote, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 6571 is hereby approved on third and final reading.
Mr. Speaker, this representation from Cabataan Portalist would like to manifest her intent to submit a written explanation of our yes vote.
The Chair cannot act simply on manifestation. If you want the Chair to act, that you will be given the opportunity to submit your written explanation. It should be in the form of a motion.
Alright.
The Chair now wants to hear the motion.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, with that may I move for the lady, Mr. Speaker, I move that the lady be given the opportunity to file her written explanation on her vote on the just approved measure.
Any objection to the motion with the Majority Leader? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading, House Bill Number 6579, and please direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measure and call the roll for the nominal vote.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 6579, and thereafter call the roll on third reading.
House Bill Number 6579, An Act Establishing a National Policy on Ease of Doing Business, Creating for the Purpose the Ease of Doing Business Commission and for other purposes. Roll call of members, consideration, House Bill Number 6579. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinumag Seisai, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte José Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Vernos, Bertis, Viason, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catamco, Caetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Ciriles, Chávez, Chepeco, Ko, Cojuanco, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisólogo, Kuwa, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesús, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, Dimapora Abdullah, Dimapora Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Regel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Periol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentevelia, Garbin, García Guendulin, García Uc, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gatsalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio Dom, González Fernando, Goroceta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Ko, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato, Suarto, Mangodadato Sadid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Viní, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiya Sagabás, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Máximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roqueari, Roque Roello, Sacdalan, Sacarbaría, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Zambar, Zandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabelliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Horacio, Suárez, Sielbarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Trabinataman, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Unico, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milesejo, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora Marcamen, Samora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred twenty-five affirmative votes, zero abstention, and zero negative votes, House Bill Number 6571 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we greet the guests of the gentlemen from COOP Natco, the Honorable Sabelliano Kanama, and Honorable Bravo, uh, Anthony Bravo, the Ardoris Canares, Delia Suplik, Veronica Paklibar, Annabelle Perez, Joseline Inot, Alan Merida, Franz Joshua Merida, William Inot, Erwin Alcuber, Rodolfo Dake Jr., Alfred Liam, Larry Banes, Colin Diano, and Buenaventura Canares Jr.
Please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
I move that we approve on third reading, House Bill Number 6589, and please direct the Secretary General to read the title of this measure and call the roll for the nominal vote.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 6589, and call the roll on third reading.
House Bill 6589, An Act Rationalizing the Requirements Imposed by the Department of Agrarian Reform Regarding Land Registration to Facilitate Speed and Efficiency in Land Registration. Roll call of members, for consideration of House Bill 6589. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinumag Seisai, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte José Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Vernos, Bertis, Viason, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catamco, Caetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Ciriles, Chávez, Chepeco, Ko, Cojuanco, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisólogo, Kuwa, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesús, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, Dimapora Abdullah, Dimapora Muhammad Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Regel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Periol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentevelia, Garbin, García Guendulin, García Uc Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gatsalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Goroceta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Ko, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Sadid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Binola, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiya Sagabás, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Máximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sacarbaría, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Zambar, Zandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabelliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Horacio, Suárez, Sielbarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sher, Sherlini, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Trabinataman, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Unico, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villarin, Yu, Lago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milesejo, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora Marcamen, Samora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred nineteen affirmative votes, seven negative votes, and no abstention, House Bill Number 6589 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading, House Bill Number 6590, and please direct the Secretary General to read the title of this measure and call the roll for the nominal vote.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 3492, and proceed with the roll, 6590, and call the roll of members on third reading.
House Bill 6590, An Act Amending Section 13 of Republic Act Number 3019, as amended, entitled The Anti-Graph and Corrupt Practices Act. Roll call of members, for consideration of House Bill 6590. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almo, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinumag Seisai, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte José Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Vernos, Bertis, Viason, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catamco, Caetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Ciriles, Chávez, Chepeco, Ko, Cojuanco, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisólogo, Kuwa, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesús, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, Dimapora Abdullah, Dimapora Muhammad Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Regel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Mari, Ferrer Luis, Periol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentevelia, Garbin, García Guendulin, García Uc Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gatsalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Goroceta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Ko, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Sadid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Binola, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiya Sagabás, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Máximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sacarbaría, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Zambar, Zandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabelliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Horacio, Suárez, Sielbarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sher, Sherlini, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Trabinataman, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Unico, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villarin, Yu, Lago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milesejo, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred thirty affirmative votes, no negative vote, and no abstention, House Bill Number 6590 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading, House Bill Numbers 3492, and please direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measure, and thereafter call the roll for the nominal vote.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 38, 3492, and proceed with the roll, call of members on third reading.
House Bill 3492, An Act Creating Three Additional Branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Third Judicial Region to be stationed at Macabebe, Pampanga, Parte Amending for the Purpose Section 14C of Batas Pampansa Bilang 129, Otherwise Known as the Justary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended, and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Roll call of members, for consideration of House Bill 3492. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abo, Abweg, Atzeron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alcala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atchenza, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barzaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Botista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Piliessiano, Belmonte Jose Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Vernos, Bertis, Viason, Biliones, Viron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut Megtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campus, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pradenil, Katamco, Caetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chepeco, Co, Cojuanco, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza de Jesús, De Venecia, De Vera, Depensor del Mar, Del Osario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Dorano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Irisé, Iregel, Ermita Buain, Scudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Yusebio, Ibardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Periol, Ploirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Port- Pentavilla, Garbin, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Óscar, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gatsalyan, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Goroceta, Gulyas Hernández Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Co, Congun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lechon, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangadudatos Huarto, Mangadudatos Ajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nobrales Jerico, Nobrales Carlo, Nolasco, Nonyes Malanyon, Waminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pangani Ban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicias Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramirezato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Zambar, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabelliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Sinson, Suansing Estrieta, Suansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherlini, Tijada, Tebes, Chanko, Ting, Tiño, Dolintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Turabinataman, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Bilya Fuerte, Bilya Nueva, Bilya Raza Suarez, Bilya Rica, Bilyarin, Yulago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred thirty-one affirmative votes, no negative vote, and no abstention, House Bill Number Three Eight, Three Four Nine Two is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill Number Six Five Seven Eight and please direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measure and call the roll for the nominal vote.
Any objection? There be- The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number Six Five Seven Eight for nominal voting.
House Bill Six Five Seven Eight, an act establishing retirement benefit system in the office of the Home Goods Fund, augmenting its employee benefits and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members for consideration of House Bill Six Five Seven Eight. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abo, Abweg, Atzeron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alcala, Alihano, Almo- Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atchenza, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barzaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Botista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Piliessiano, Belmonte Jose Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Vernos, Bertis, Viason, Biliones, Viron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut Megtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campus, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pradenil, Katamco, Caetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chepeco, Co, Cojuanco, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza de Jesús, De Venecia, De Vera, Depensor del Mar, Del Osario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Dorano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Irisé, Iregel, Ermita Buain, Scudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Yusebio, Ibardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Ferrer Luis, Periol, Ploirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentavilla, Garbin, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Óscar, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gatsalyan, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Goroceta, Gulyas Hernández Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Co, Congun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lechon, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangadudatos Huarto, Mangadudatos Ajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirra- Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nobrales Jerico, Nobrales Carlo, Nolasco, Nonyes Malanyon, Waminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pangani Ban, Pangani Ban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicias Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramirezato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Zambar, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabelliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Silverio, Sinson, Suansing Estrieta, Suansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherlini, Tijada, Tebes, Chanko, Ting, Tiño, Dolintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Turabinataman, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Bilya Fuerte, Bilya Nueva, Bilya Raza Suarez, Bilya Rica, Bilyarin, Yulago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred thirty-one affirmative votes, no negative vote and no abstention, House Bill Number Six Five Seven Eight is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number Five Six Seven Zero and Senate Bill Number One Four Six Five on Granting Free Irrigation Services to Small Farmers. In accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the House and the Senate have approved on third reading House Bill Number Six One Three Six and Senate Bill Number Two Zero Nine respectively, which seek to declare the twenty-fifth day of August of every year as the National Technical Vocational Day. We have been informed that the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, sponsor of House Bill Number Six One Three Six, as well as the authors thereof, are in concurrence with the provisions of Senate Bill Number Two Zero Nine. In accordance with our rules, I move that we adopt Senate Bill Number Two Zero Nine as an amendment to House Bill Number Six One Three Six.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Accordingly, Senate Bill Number Two Zero Nine as amendment to House Bill Number Six One Three Five is hereby adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the Chair declares a privilege hour.
Mr. Speaker, first to speak is the distinguished lady from the First District of Zamboanga del Sur, the Honorable Divina Grace Yu.
The distinguished gentle lady, Divina Yu is hereby recognized.
Mr. Speaker, honorable members of this august body, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. November is Children's Month in the Philippines. I rise today to champion the cause of the Filipino child who is now beleaguered by the birthing pains of a drug-free Philippines. Allow me first to thank the children who sang Ar Lupang Hinirang from Vides Philippines and the children from Verlani Foundation for our prayer for today's session. Children members of the Child Rights Network are also in the gallery. Maraming salamat sa inyong pagpunta dito. Today, November twentieth, is the twenty-eighth anniversary of the Convention on the Rights of the Child. This month of November is declared as Children's Month all over the country by virtue of Republic Act Number One Zero Six Six One. The Philippines being a signatory to this convention is duty-bound to protect the rights of the child, to survival and development, protection from abuse and discrimination, and participation in matters concerning them. In fact, our nation was way ahead of this convention in enumerating the rights of the Filipino child. In December of nineteen seventy-four, fifteen years prior to the Convention on the Rights of the Child in nineteen eighty-nine, Section Three of Presidential Decree Number Six Oh Three, otherwise known as the Child and Youth Welfare Code, already identified these rights of the child. Right to a dignity from conception to birth, the right to a wholesome family life with love, care, understanding, and moral and material security, right to education and development of full potential, right to protection from hazards of environment, and the right to grow up as a free individual in atmosphere of peace, understanding, and tolerance. Under this law, a Filipino child is entitled to an efficient and honest government that will deepen his faith in democracy. Mr. Speaker, honorable members of this chamber, we are bound to make this happen, to make an environment for our children which will make them safe and protected. This week, Mr. Speaker, we in the Committee on the Welfare of Children, together with the Child Rights Network, are celebrating Children's Month here at the House of Representatives. We do this in hopes of getting the attention of more of our esteemed colleagues to become child advocates supporting the welfare of the Filipino child. Earlier this afternoon, we launched a three-day activity with a theme Karahasan Wakasan Bata Protektahan, including photo exhibits and advocacy campaigns at the North Wing Lobby. Some of our non-government partners in the CRN also accompanied children going from one congressman's room to another to distribute materials relating to the legislations needed by a child. We shall also sponsor forums on first, sexual consent in the eyes of the child, a policy forum on commercial sexual exploitation of children, and increasing the age to determine the sexual consent. Second, civil registration and vital statistics. And third, legal discussions on violence against women and girls, including child early and forced marriage. We invite you and your respective staff to listen to these discussions at the Zulueta Room of the South Wing Annex tomorrow and on Wednesday in order to realize and appreciate the other issues surrounding children. The theme of this year's celebration is also in consonance with that of the theme of the Department of Social Welfare and Development and the Council for the Welfare of Children, which is Bata Iiwas Sa Droga. Very apt, very fitting at this time when drug war is not yet won, when the deaths, arrests, and violence abound, we need to protect the child. All of us here have children or grandchildren of our own and we do not want any of them to fall prey to the menaces of illegal drugs. We do not want any of them to be victims of hazing or any other violent episode. We do not want them roaming the streets at night, falling prey to criminals and syndicates. As Chairman of the Committee on the Welfare of Children, I am honored to share with you that the committee had also done its part in keeping the child safe and protected. Thanks to this body, we have taken steps to ensure that children below five years old are cared for by competent, efficient, and focused daycare workers. As we will hopefully approve today, the third reading version of the Magna Carta of the daycare workers. In the gla- In the gallery here today are the Marikina daycare workers. Thank you very much for coming. Likewise, for approval on the third reading, is the bill making it illegal to leave children below eight years old unattended inside a motor vehicle where there have been instances of death and serious injuries because of this neglect by parents. The regulation of children's products containing hazardous chemicals has all- also been reported out. The committee has also approved the Protection for Children in Situations of Armed Conflict and the Safe Arms for Children Act, granting of financial benefits of children with special needs, and the promotion of positive and nonviolent discipline. These are still with other committees as we seek either budgetary requirements or tax reliefs for children's welfare. The committee is currently working on bills seeking to create rehabilitation centers for children with disabilities and a bill to simplify the processes and a bill to simplify the processes of alternative childcare, including fostering, adoption, and residential care, so that we can minimize neglected children and match them to families awaiting to have children. Mr. Speaker, honorable members, there is more that needs to be done after our committee deliberations. This is where we seek your help. The committee efforts will be fruitful if we all gather your support for these bills at the proper time. I once again invite your honors to look at our exhibit at the North Lobby and to join us for a mini-concert on Wednesday Wednesday afternoon to close the event. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, honorable colleagues. Let us all continuously strive and seek for the best interest of the child.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the distinguished lady from Zamboanga del Sur to the Committee on Rules.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, next to speak is the gentleman from Anak Paois. Move that we recognize the Honorable Ariel Casilau.
The Honorable Ariel Casilau is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Itaguyod ang interes ng magsasakang Pilipino nakilain ang pakikibaka ng mga katipunero laban sa feudal na kolonialismong castila. Honorable Speaker, mga kasamang mamabatas, pagbati ng hustisyang panlipunan at demokrasya ang pinapahatid ng kinatawang nito. Hingilpo sa darating na November 30, ang araw ng kabayanihan, araw ng kaarawan ni Gatt Andres Bonipaso. Noong nakaraang buwan, aktibong lumahok ang Anak Paois Partilis sa pagmarka sa ikapa 45-an anniversary ng Presidential Decree Number 27 sa buong bansa. Sa pamamagitan ng panawagang tunay na reforma sa lupa o libreng pamamahagi ng lupa sa mga maralitang magsasaka. Gayun din sa darating na November 30, ay ang 17anim na Bonipaso Day o Araw ng Pagunita sa supremo ng katipunan na sigat Andres Bonipaso, na nagbigkis sa mamayang Pilipino para si revolucionaryong pagpapatalsek sa kolonyal na paghahari ng castila sa ating bansa. Mga kasamang mamabatas, ayun mismo sa datos ng gobyerno sa kasalukuyan, mahigit kalahati o 55% ng kabuwang populasyon sa bansa ay nakabase sa mga rural areas o kanayunan. Sa 100,000,000 Pilipino noong 2015, pumalo sa 55,000,000 ang naninirahan sa kanayunan. Nangangahulugan lamang na napakalaking bahagi ng ating lipunan ang umaasa sa lupa, bilang kanilang kabuhayan, gayun din tirahan, o mga komunidad. Sila ay ang mayorya sa ating bansa, sila ang mga magsasakang Pilipino. Gayun pa man, ang kanilang demokratikong interes, ang pagkamit ng lupang kanilang sinasaka na sinasalamin ng tunay na reforma sa lupa, ay hindi makikita sa kung ano mang programa ng ating gobyerno o ano mang umiiral na batas sa kasalukuyan. Marahin, ayon sa ilan, meron namang Comprehensive Agrarian Reform Program, or CARP, na nag-expire na noong Junyo 2014. Kung kaya, wala itong kapangyarihang sumaklaw pa ng mga lupa para sa land distribution. Habang malinaw sa buong bansa, milyon-milyon magsasakang Pilipino ang nanatiling walang lupa. Mr. Speaker, mga kasama kong mamabatas, kung ano ang kalagayang kawalan ng lupa ng mga magsasakang Pilipino noong panahon ni Gatt Andres Bonipaso sa ilalim ng kolonialismong castila, gayun din ang kawalang lupa ng mga magsasaka na dapat sana ay pinagsisilbihan ng ating gobyerno o estadong binubuo ng mga mismong mga mamayang Pilipino. Ang katipunang pinamunuan ni Andres Bonipaso ay mayoryang binuo ng mga magsasakang Pilipino. Ito ang revolusyon kanilang inilunsad na pambansa demokratiko. Itanggi man ang iba na ito ay inspirado ng mga pambansa demokratiko o liberal burgess na madugong revolusyon sa Europa laban sa feudal na kaayusan ng lipunan ng ika-18th at 19th na siglo, ang revolusyon ito ay mayoryang nilahukan ng mga magsasaka o peasant revolution na ilang siglong pinagsamantalahan ng mga panginoong may lupa o feudal lords. Kaya sa kanilang galit, ay kanilang pinagpapatay ang mga ito. At ang mga ulo ay tinusok sa mga sibat at dinisplay para makita ng malawak na publiko. Ito ang madugong revolusyon dumurug sa feudal na kaayusan ng lipunan nagluwal sa bagong sistema ang pagbubuo ng republika, kontra sa diktadoriyang monarkiya at sa pagsisimula ng kapitalistang ekonomiya, kontra sa feudal na pinaghaharian ng mga panginoong may lupa. Ang revolusyon Pilipino, Mr. Speaker, ay naglayong palayain ang ating bansa, itayo ang republika, at ipamahagi ang lupang kinangkam ng mga inkommyendas at haciendas ng castila. Gayun din ang itinaguriang friar lands sa mga maralitang magsasakang Pilipino. Gayun pa man, hindi ito nakamit dahil sa pagpasok ng bagong superpower ang imperialistang Amerikan na may maunlad na kapitalistang ekonomiya at nagtakeover sa mga dating kolonya ng castila. Kaya mula noon hanggang ngayong 2017, wala pa sa kasaysayan ng bansa na nagpatupad ng tunay na reforma sa lupa. Ang kapitalistang pakunlad sa Europa na ibinunga ng mga madugong revolusyon ay hindi naganap at hindi pa nagaganap sa Pilipinas. Kaya ang mga magsasakang Pilipino ay kasalukuyan. Walang pinagkaiba sa mga magsasakang alipin ng mga mauunlad na bansa. Ang kalupaan sa bansa ay kontrolado ng iilang mga haciendero o mga kasosyong komprader mga naglalawakan ng mga plantasyon ng agribusiness. Mr. Speaker, mga kapwa mamabatas, sa mga patakaran na programa ngayon, nakikitang pag-asa ang masang magsasaka dahil kung ano ang papel ng bansa noong bilang supply lamang ng hilaw na materyales sa mga mauunlad na bansa, ganun pa rin ngayon. Ang malala, ang mga dayuhan ay nandito na mismo sa ating bansa na nagbunga ng mga malawakang pagpapalayas ng mga magsasakang Pilipino. Mula kolonialismong castila at Amerikan hanggang sa mga nagdaang rehimen, walang pundamental na reformang naaasahan ang magsasakang Pilipino kung kaya sila ay natutulak sa mas maigting na pakikibaka para sa kanilang karapatan sa lupa. Noong 2014, sinabi pa noong Davao City Mayor, ni Mayor Duterte, "May hirap ang sumosuporta sa mga rebelde, di matatalo." At sinabihan ko sila, ang mga militar sa Pakibato District, Davao City, "Kailangan mong ituring na mahal ng lahat ng mga tao ang NPA. Yan ang buhay nila. Naging tao na sila dyan sa paghihirap at tinulungan sila ng NPA. At noong nanalo na sa pagkapangulo at naging pangulo na si Pangulong Duterte, siya ay na nga kong itutuloy ang pistoks sa pagitan ng National Democratic Front of the Philippines. At noong Agosto 2016 naman, sinabi ni Pangulong Duterte, "I can accommodate all of them. At 'yung mga NPA, I will release money and land for them." 'Yung totohanan na land reform. At maging nitong Agosto 2017, sinabi ni Pangulong Duterte, "Kung 'yung mga NPA mag surrender, meron kaming housing project. If they want to stop fighting, 'yung gusto, all you have to do is to drop your weapon, give it to your leader, and come down." Ito po mismo ang mga salita ni Pangulong Duterte na nagsabi na ang NPA ay suportado ng mga mahirap na magsasaka. Inalok pa nga niya ng lupa, trabaho, at pabahay. Gayun pa man, bakit ang mga hindi NPA na mga magsasaka, maralitang lungsod, mga manggagawa, ay hindi mabigyan ng lupa, pabahay, at trabaho? Siya mismo ang nagpatunay na ang misyon ng NPA ay lupa sa pamamagitan ng revolusyong agrario. Kung ang mga katipunero, Mr. Speaker, ay nakibaka para sa lupa kontra sa mga dayuhang haciendero, inkommyenda, hindi ba mas malala na ang NPA ngayon ay lumalaban kontra sa mga Pilipinong haciendero? Dahil pinatunayan nito na hindi kayang tugunan ng mismong mga kababayan ang demokratikong interes ng napakaraming magsasakang o milyon-milyon magsasakang Pilipino. Kaya, Mr. Speaker, mga kapwa mamabatas, ang issue ng reformang agrario ay hindi simpleng usapin. Ito ang naglalantad sa atin kung kaninong interes ang ating itinataguyod: interes ng iilang mayayaman o interes ng milyon-milyon magsasaka; interes ng dayuhan o interes ng magsasakang Pilipino. Karugtong nito, dahil ang kasalukuyang administrasyon sa kabila ng mga pangako nyang mga reforma para sa mga magsasaka noong panahon ng kampanya, ay wala pa rin pundamental na reformang ipinapatupad, lalo pa sa kasalukuyan sa usapin ng tunay na reforma sa lupa. Mr. Speaker, kabahagi po ng pangako ni Pangulong Duterte noong nangangampanyasya kapag siya ay nanalo nasa diskesyon ng pangulo ang pagdistribute ng mga agricultural public lands. Sa kasalukuyang datos, umaabot po sa 6,000,000 hectareang public agricultural lands ang nasa disposal dapat ni Pangulong Duterte. Sa kasamaang palad ni isang hektarya, mula dito sa 6,000,000 na agricultural public lands ay hindi pa naipamamahagi. Worse, Mr. Speaker, sa katatapos lamang na pulong ni President Trump at ni Pangulong Duterte, baka nakareserba na ito mga publikong lupang agricultural na ito sa mga negosyong makadayuhan. Kung hindi naman natin ipaprioritize sa Kongreso, ay wag na tayo magtaka. Nadadami lamang ang mga protesta ng mga magsasaka sa mga probinsya, sa kanilang mga lakbayan, ang kanilang mga bungkalan, gayun din ang kanilang pagsampa o pagsapi sa New People's Army. Dahil wala naman silang makikitang pag-asa, kung panatilihin natin ang ating mga pansariling interes, ay maghanda na lamang tayo sa hinaharap kung saan nasa harapan na natin ang napakaraming magsasakang gutom, galit, at handang lumaban. Sa kabilang banda naman, hinahamon ko ang mga bawat kasamahan ko sa Kongresong ito na mandigan para sa tunay na pagbabago at ang mga pambansang demokratikong reforma simula sa tunay na reforma sa lupa at ang kangabalito na rural, genuine rural development. Isa diwa at isa buhay natin ang mga pakikibaka, sakripisyo, ni Gatt Andres Bonipaso, ang buong katipunan at ang masang kasapian ng katipunan para sa tunay na pambansang demokrasya at kalyaan. Muli kami sa Anak Paois Partilis, Mr. Speaker, mga kasamahan mamabatas, nananawagan para sa tunay na reforma sa lupa. Isabatas ang House Bill 555, or Genuine Agrarian Reform, at tutulan ang anumang panukala para sa 100%ong pagbubukas sa dayuhang pagmamayari sa lupa ng ating bansa. Maraming salamat, magandang hapon po.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Casilau to the Committee on Rules.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Next to speak, Mr. Speaker, is the gentleman from Magdalo. I move that we recognize the Honorable Gary Alejano.
The Honorable Gary Alejano is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That was the battle cry of the Philippine Marine Corps. Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues and our countrymen, a pleasant afternoon. Today, I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege on the occasion of the celebration of the 67th birthday of the Philippine Marine Corps. The Marine Corps calls their anniversaries as birthdays. 67 years ago, the Philippine government organized the Philippine Marine Corps. It was during the incumbency of then-President El Pido Kirino when the history of the Philippine Marines unfolded and the Marines tradition of excellence and dedication started. By virtue of General Order Number 319 dated November 2, 1950, Alpha Company, which was to be known as Marines, was created. And on November 7, 1950, then-Secretary of National Defense Ramon Magcaysay formally activated it at the Naval Operating Base in Cavite. The Philippine Marines was envisioned to be a force that is light, highly mobile, and composed of disciplined and dedicated officers and men who are capable of aggressively and persistently pursue and engage lawless elements all over the archipelago. Considering the dangers attached to their duty, only volunteers were accepted to join this special unit. Forming the corps of this newly formed unit were six officers and 206 enlisted personnel, who were mostly veterans of World War II. The Philippine Marines' first commanding officer was Lieutenant Senior Grade Manuel Gomez, an alumnus of the Philippine Military Academy of Class of 1941 and a graduate of Armored Tactics from Fort Knox in Kentucky. It rests upon the shoulder of Lieutenant Senior Grade Gomez that direct responsibility of training, equipping, and organizing the newly established unit. During his first meeting with his staff, Lieutenant Senior Grade Gomez uttered, in a quote, "The task of training these young men into Marines vested upon us. Today, as we start training them, we will be striking the first hammer blow in forging the cutting edge of the Armed Forces," end of quote. And true enough, 67 years after, the Philippine Marine Corps has become the barometer of excellence and dedication in the Armed Forces of the Philippines. The members of the Philippine Marine Corps have religiously observed its code of honor, duty, and valor. Members of the Marine Corps are considered men and women of valor. They are soldiers who place the country, their values, and their fellow citizens higher than themselves. Should the need arise, they are ready and willing to make the ultimate sacrifice. The Marines' belief in the ideals of the Corps has been displayed evidently during the recent siege in Marawi. Many of our troops endured long days and nights of fighting in trying to flush out ISIS-inspired Maote and Da Abu Sayyaf. For almost five months, members of the Philippine Marine Corps, along with other units from the Armed Forces and the PNP, showed great resolve and immense commitment in suppressing enemies of the state and regain control of Marawi City. The liberation of Marawi unfortunately came with a great cost. Thirty-five members of the Marines were killed, along with the 357 that were wounded. Though their duty has ended, their tales will be added to the countless stories of bravery, gallantry, and sacrifice that came to define the Corps. I would like to invite everyone to watch this succeeding video, courtesy of the Philippine Marine Corps, to give everyone in this chamber an idea regarding the exploits, challenges, and triumphs that members of the Philippine Marine Corps faced in the battlefield in pursuit of their mandate. Likewise, the video is a tribute to the 35 warriors who perished in Marawi. Please let us watch the video. Please let us watch the video.
Hinubog nga kami ng sandatahang lakas sir, ng maging isang marino sir. Ang malakas ang loob. Ang ibig sabihin ng pagiging kawal sir ay tatlong is lang 'yan sir. Security, service, at tsaka subirin't sir. Kami 'yung kumbaga na atasan na magbantay sa teritoryo natin sir.
Thank you, my dear colleagues, for the indulgence. We give honor and admire the leadership, courage, and determination that the Marines showed during their stint in Marawi. For nearly seven decades, the Philippine Marine Corps has played a very significant role in securing the entire Philippine archipelago through its rapid mobilization and impious operations. In fact, they are right now there, manning our islands in the spratlies to ensure that our sovereignty and territorial integrity are not compromised. The Corps has played an integral part in our nation's development as well as in our nation's history. It is very unfortunate, however, that the existence of the Philippine Marine Corps rests on a shaky foundation on an uncertain legal ground. As I have mentioned earlier, the legal basis of the Marines' existence is a mere Armed Forces of the Philippines' general order. A general order may be rescinded or revoked any time by the Executive Department through the Chief of Staff, hence putting in peril their existence. It is quite frankly unjust, if not totally dishonorable, that after almost seven decades of dedicated service with the highest standards of discipline, after countless triumphs and sacrifices, we have failed to legally establish the existence of the Philippine Marine Corps. My office is currently drafting a proposed measure that will institutionalize the establishment of the Philippine Marine Corps in the Armed Forces of the Philippines. The said proposed measure will likewise recommend full fiscal autonomy to the Philippine Marine Corps apart from that of the Philippine Navy. At present, the Philippine Marine Corps is under the Philippine Navy. Fiscal autonomy would allow the Marines to chart their own future as to the number and promotion of their personnel type and number of logistics they need to procure, among others, in order to modernize and ensure continuity of their indispensable service to the Filipino people. I hope that my honorable colleagues in this chamber will support my proposed measure once it is filed. As a former active and now reserve Marine officer, I call on this august chamber for support in order to provide a strong legal ground for the Marine Corps to stand on and a discretion on their finances so they may be able to plan properly according to their mandate. Your Marines are not only the defenders of our country's sovereignty and territorial integrity, but also a rapid responders during times of natural and man-made calamities and disasters. Before I end, I would like to request my dear colleagues present now to stand up and offer a moment of silence to honor our fallen Marines as well as our soldiers who died in the service of our country. May I request our colleagues to please stand up? Thank you very much. Again, I would like to commend the cutting edge of the Armed Forces of the Philippines, representatives of the best in surgery, defenders of our country and Filipino people, the so-called the few, the proud, the Philippine Marine Corps on the occasion of our 67th birthday. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Alejano to the Committee on Rules.
Any objection? The Chair here is not. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, next on our list is the Honorable Arnold Fotevies, but before I make the proper motion, may we know first if the gentleman is in the session hall? With that, Mr. Speaker, may I proceed to the next listed speaker. Fifth is the Honorable Kalid Dimaporo. Likewise, Mr. Speaker, before I make the proper motion, may we find out first if the gentleman is in the session hall? Both not being around, Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the sixth member to speak. I move that we recognize the distinguished gentleman from the Second District of Pangasinan, the Honorable Leopoldo Batawil.
The Honorable Congressman Leopoldo Batawil is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, dear colleagues. Mr. Speaker and my dear colleagues, I stand on personal and collective privilege on the matter of caring, caring for and honoring our veterans and military and police retirees. This is a very timely privileged speech and can be considered as a rejoinder to the privileged speech of our dear colleague Congressman Gary Alejano. My trip to Washington, DC on October 25, 2017, this humble representation upon invitation of the United States Congress to receive the Congressional Gold Medal on behalf of the 260,715 Filipino veterans of World War II. Truly, I was blessed and privileged being Chairman of the House Committee on Veterans Affairs and Welfare to be part of that historical event. The Congressional Gold Medal is one of America's highest civilian awards bestowed to persons regardless of citizenship who have made an impact on American history and culture for their long and outstanding achievement. Among the recipients of this award were Mother Teresa, Nelson Mandela, and the 65th Infantry Regiment who fought during the Korean War. Though it was long overdue, the US Congress has finally granted and paid tribute to the service and sacrifice of Filipino war, World War II veterans. It was a dream come true for the surviving veterans and their dependents who for more than six decades have consistently pursued the battle to gain such recognition. The benefits there to attach could surely help ameliorate their living conditions. I feel proud that my uncle and my namesake, the late third Lieutenant Leopoldo de Guzman Batawil, is one among the Filipino veterans thus entitled to the Congressional Gold Medal. Uncle Leopoldo was among the first casualties in Bataan during World War II. His body was never found. He was supposed to graduate as member of the Philippine Military Academy Class of 1943 when the war broke out. It was he who inspired me to pursue the same career in the same military academy. My uncle's story is just one among many untold stories of Filipino soldiers who have witnessed and suffered the untold horrors of war, yet courageously fought for the cause of freedom and democracy. They were either killed in action or missing in action or survived the cruel war. Many of the aging survivors have passed away. Historically, Filipinos have been recognized worldwide as brave fighters. Even General Douglas MacArthur was so taken by the resilience and strength of native guerrilla forces against the Japanese invaders that he was prompted to say, "Give me 10,000 Filipinos and I shall conquer the world." Mr. Speaker, if the US Congress could afford due recognition to the heroic deeds of Filipino war veterans, shouldn't it be more fitting for the Philippine government itself to pay tribute to its own? As a nation, we have a moral obligation to render due respect and recognition of our veteran soldiers as well as retired police personnel. As a nation, we are obliged to honor them not only by holding occasional ceremonies, but also by providing them utmost care and best benefits just like in many other countries. We must deeply understand that because of our veterans, we now enjoy peace, freedom, and democracy. Because of our soldiers and peacekeeping forces who secured the nation, fought lawless elements and terrorists, and stood guard in defense of our freedom, we now live in peace. Our freedom and peace did not did not and does not come cheap. It paid and it pays a high price. That is, the lives of many soldiers and policemen who have died or even disabled or at the least risked their lives and limbs in the line of duty. We remember the Mamasapanu class which cost the lives of 44 Special Action Personnel. Likewise, we note the very recent Marawi siege where the government lost more than 150 soldiers and policemen before regaining the territory, which has a high price. It is more, it is our moral obligation to render our soldiers and police due respect, care, and best quality benefits the government could ever provide for their social, economic security, and general welfare. Just as we are able to spend to buy high-powered firearms, tanks, and military hardware, we must also spend to take utmost care of the men and women who fought the war and poured out their blood, sweat, and tears. We have to take utmost care of, number one, veterans and police retirees and the military retirees who are aging, sickly, and only have a few years more to live. Those having difficulty paying their bills and struggling to make both ends meet. Those with multiple amputations, lost eyesight, or post-traumatic stress disorder. Spouses and children who are suffering the loss of a loved one. In many countries, the agency that functions to support and provide the needs of veterans in their time after service is a whole department. Unlike in our country, where we only have an office, the Philippine Veterans Affairs Office, under a department which is the Department of National Defense. In the United States, they have the Department of Veterans Affairs, a federal cabinet-level agency that provides near comprehensive health care services to eligible military veterans at medical centers and outpatient clinics located throughout the country. Under this department are three main subdivisions: an Administration of Veterans Health, Administration of Veterans Benefits, and National Cemetery Administration. They allocate about 270 billion for companies- They allocate about 270 billion for compensation benefits, education benefits, and burial benefits. At present, they are still trying to improve and expand services to veterans as President Trump has proposed a 6% boost of the department's budget for fiscal 2018. In Canada, there is also a department-level agency responsible for pensions, benefits, and services of war veterans, Canadian Armed Forces and police retirees and their families. They have had, there they have the Veterans Bill of Rights that guarantees benefits, fairness, and entrenched respect and dignity for veterans and their families. In the government of Australia, there is likewise a department that administers income support, compensation, care, and commemoration programs for their more than 400,000 veterans and their widows, widowers, and dependents. Under this department are offices, commissions, and boards, each focusing on a particular service or task like military rehabilitation and compensation, veterans' review, medical review, counseling, memorial, and war graves. In Taiwan, Republic of China, they have a cabinet-level council with responsibility to assist in education assistance, employment assistance, medical care, home care, and other general services for retired servicemen and women from the Republic of China Armed Forces. Until, under it are units with specific responsibilities for veterans' service and assistance: home care, education, unemployment, healthcare, retirement, and management services. In the countries mentioned, Mr. Speaker, we notice how comprehensive the support and assistance given by the respective governments to their veterans, to their military, to their police personnel in their time after service. Through a high-level agency, which defines subunits focusing on particular tasks, they are able to ensure inclusively the much-needed care, support, benefits, and protection for the well-being of their veterans, police, and military retirees. Moreover, care and support is boosted through the budget increase. Whereas in the Philippines, what we have is the Philippine Veterans Affairs Office under the Department of National Defense. It is a small office supposedly mandated to fulfill a state policy that it shall provide immediate and adequate care, benefits, and other forms of assistance to war veterans and veterans of military campaigns, their surviving spouses and orphans. Fund shall be provided for. That was provided for by Section 7, Article 16 of the 1987 Philippine Constitution. Currently, the PIVO functions to ensure that our veterans receive the care and benefits they have earned. It functions to administer a program that will ensure timely and steady provision of pensions, including the settlement of unpaid pension obligations, provide health care, and accredited hospitals nationwide, and extend pension benefits such as burial and educational assistance. In addition, PIVO is in charge of the memorialization of veterans' heroic deeds through promoting military shrines and historical awareness. Mr. Speaker, it appears that the PIVO has been delegated a very huge responsibility. Ensuring and providing adequate care benefits and assistance to veterans is not a simple task. As we noticed in other countries, they address the needs of veterans in a very comprehensive manner with focus on every field of endeavor: healthcare services, non-healthcare benefits, retirement management, education and employment, death benefits, among others. In view of this situation, perhaps the PIVO structure being under a department be considered for review under the right sizing program of the government on complaint of PNP and military retirees against the DBM proposal. Meanwhile, Mr. Speaker, this representation received a manifesto from the Philippine National Police Retirees Association, Incorporated, last November 6, 2017, opposing the draft joint resolution submitted by the DBM to Congress. The said joint resolution is about the compensation adjustment for caps and soldiers, where they could enjoy 100% pay hike as promised by President Duterte. According to the DBM, the adjustment will result in 58.7% average increase in base pay for all military and uniform personnel ranks by January 1, 2018. In their manifesto, the Police Retirees Association, Incorporated, stated that it has noted with vigilance DBM's intention to exclude police retirees, their survivors, and transferees from the proposed increase in base pay of active PNP members this coming fiscal year 2018. And this includes the retirees from the Armed Forces of the Philippines. Indeed, the DBM intentionally excluded pensioners in the proposed pay adjustment. DBM Secretary Benjamin Jokno himself was quoted in the papers, saying, "There is a provision in the joint resolution for the military salary hike that the pension will be set at the 2017 level. It will not be automatically adjusted," as told to reporters during the 43rd Philippine Business Conference and Expo in Manila on October 20, 2017. Under the Republic Act Number 6975, as amended by Republic Act Number 8551, there is a provision stating that retirement pay of the officers and non-officers of the PNP shall be subject to adjustments based on the prevailing scale of base pay of police personnel in the active service. Likewise, in the Section 17 of the Presidential Decree Number 1638, provides that the retirement pay of an officer or enlisted man from the Armed Forces of the Philippines shall be subject to adjustment based on the prevailing scale of base pay of military personnel in the active service. In other words, the above-stated provisions mean that the increase in retirees' pensions is indexed to the base pay of those in active service. Being so, the DBM wanted this retirement features repealed in joint resolution as a move to arrest the ballooning pension. The Inter-Agency Development Budget Coordination Committee, or DBCC, has identified the rapidly increasing pension costs of all uniformed services as a fiscal risk in its fiscal risk statement report for 2015-2016. The DBCC said that in 2016, the pension budget amounts to 71 billion, which is projected to reach more than double in eight years to 187.9 billion. On the side of the PRAI, Police Retirees Association, Incorporated, it opposes the DBM's move to suspend indexation for pensioners as they don't understand why they should bear the burden of the so-called fiscal risk. PRAI is in the position that being stakeholders, the retirees must first be consulted on any compensation scheme for pensioners, that there is a need for further study regarding any amendment to existing pension laws, and that without consultation, the joint resolution would be violative of the retirees vested rights. Mr. Speaker, this representation is deeply saddened by the predicament of these police and military retirees. While their pension differential have not been totally released, here comes another problem. They have advocated for the increase in basic pay of those in active service, knowing that based on existing laws, they would be automatically indexed. But when the increase was granted, it became unfortunate for them to learn. They will be stripped of entitlement to indexation. They now feel they are being unfairly treated as second-class citizens. They feel that their long years of service putting their lives at stake in the name of peace and freedom are being set in the background. Do they deserve such treatment? We understand that these retirees are already in the last stages of their life. Most of them sickly and rely solely on their pensions to survive with the rising cost of medicines and daily subsistence. Thus, they need more care, support, and assistance, especially those with lower ranking position. Mr. Speaker, there must be another means to address this fiscal risk than depriving police and military retirees of their rights and privileges earned in their long years of service. This move of the DBM sounds unconstitutional if referred to Section 7 under the Article on General Provisions of the Philippine Constitution. In closing, this representation would like to move for a careful study of the DBM drafted joint resolution for approval of the House and the Senate. Senator Jokno of the DBM said that they are conducting studies for possible military pension reforms that would involve the GSIS. I therefore move that to maintain base pay indexation of police and military retirees in the proposed joint resolution until the DBM could present a viable plan for pension reforms for our uniform personnel. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Batawil to the Committee on Rules.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, next to speak is the gentleman from the Lone District of Baguio City. I move that we recognize the Honorable Mark Go.
The Honorable Mark Go is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Majority Leader. To my esteemed colleagues here in the House of Representatives and to all the guests who have graced us with their valued presence, a pleasant and fruitful evening. Today, I stand before this august hall with utmost pride as I share with you an exciting news our district received over the session recess. Last October 31, 2017, the United Nations Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization, or UNESCO, announced that 64 new cities were selected to be part of the prestigious UNESCO Creative Cities Network. And through the initiative of the Department of Tourism, Cordillera Administrative Region, along with the rest of the members of the Technical Working Committee, including the University of the Philippines, Baguio, the City Government of Baguio, and other government and non-governmental institutions, the city of Baguio now joins the rank of Cairo, Egypt, Ichoon, South Korea, Tanasawa, Japan, and Santa Fe, USA, as an official member city of the Creative Cities Network under the Crafts and Folk Arts Creative Film. The UNESCO Creative Cities Network was instituted in 2004 to promote cooperation among cities around the world that have been recognized for fostering creativity as a driving tool for sustainable urban development. The creative city, according to scholar Charles Landry, is a city with a diversified, sophisticated, and internationally oriented cultural industries that nurtures and supports a wealth of local and international artistic activity that are commercial, subsidized, and voluntary. The network is currently composed of 180 cities from 72 countries committed to developing and exchanging innovative best practices to promote creative industries, strengthening participation in cultural life, and integrating culture into sustainable urban development policies at both the local and international levels. Apart from the crafts and folk arts creative films, where Baguio and the cities I have previously mentioned were included, the network highlights the member cities' creativity in six other creative fields, designed for which Dubai and Istanbul were recognized. Film from Bristol and Terraza, Spain, gastronomy for Alba, Italy, and Benaventura, Colombia; literature for Utrecht, Netherlands, and Seattle; media arts for Braga, Portugal; and music under which Chennai, India, and Morelia, Mexico were included. Listed on the current slide being shown are the 64 members of members of UNESCO Creative Cities Network. Before becoming a part of the network, an applicant city must choose among the seven creative fields for which it seeks to be recognized. The city is then evaluated on its cultural assets, its role in the city's history and economic performance, the different communities and groups engaged in the creative field, the events, mechanisms, and policies, and other programs devoted to creative industries, the presence of learning institutions and research centers specializing on the creative field, and the available facilities and infrastructures benefiting the creative sector, among others. Blessed with its defining climate and natural ecosystem and strengthened by the cooperative synergy of the government, the business sector, and the civil society, the city of Baguio has nurtured a rich melting pot of upland and lowland cultures that has shaped the city's thriving local economy. Baguio was cited for its strong and noteworthy industries of traditional weaving, wood and machinery sculpting, and metal crafting. Not only do these industries preserve our indigenous cultures and showcase our diverse artistic talents, Baguio's creative sector makes up much of the city's local tourism and trade, which contributes the lion's share to the city's gross domestic product. Amidst this fast-paced and technologically dependent dynamic of the global economy, cultural heritage, and the arts have often suffered in favor of other capital-intensive industries to the detriment of local artists and cultural identity. The idea that this consumption-driven economy has effectively relegated the arts to the status of unnecessary expense has stifled the growth of many creative industries in the country. This is in spite of the fact that we Filipinos have so much to offer the world in terms of creativity and artistry. The late Lee Kwan Yu once said, "Filipino professionals, which we recruited to work in Singapore, are as good as our own." Indeed, their architects, artists, and musicians are more artistic and creative than ours. Even foreign political and economic figures recognize our country's comparative advantage over creative industries. It is high time that we recognize it ourselves. Even in the international area, quantifying the actual social and economic contribution of creative industries is relatively young. A recent study conducted by Ernst &amp; Young puts the combined global annual revenue of cultural and creative industries at 2.2 trillion, surpassing even the income of telecommunications services and even the entire GDP of India. Here in our country, we have yet to fully tap the potential of our creative sector. I believe that through adequate government support, through linkages, policies, mechanisms, and of course, funding, we can effectively harness our people's natural talents in raising our national productivity. We can transform mere sentimental value over our cultural products to actual economic value. What is now known as the creative economy is largely a product of the 21st century. This fast-evolving concept of generating economic growth and development from creative assets can be an effective tool in ensuring inclusive growth and development. My friends, let us look at our country's economic performance over the past few years. With a GDP growth of 6.9%, the Philippines has emerged this region's newest economic darling. Consequently, we have even achieved a credit rating not higher than investment grade. And yet, what has been a consistent criticism over these notable experiences is the lack of trickle-down. The Philippines' economic growth in recent years has also highlighted our country's serious problem on inequality. While the wealth of the 40 richest families in the Philippines account for 76.5% of our national GDP... our national GDP, around a quarter of our population still live on less than a dollar a day. Looking at it geographically, with exemption of many highly urbanized cities, we can see that some of the regions and provinces farthest from Manila also have the lowest GDPs. And it happens that it is these localities where the most beautiful cultural and creative products can be found, worthy of being showcased in the global competitive states. What we aspire as a nation is more than just growth in the performance of our macroeconomic indices. What we aspire for is actual sustainable development. And sustainable development is rooted on the empowerment of our people and the strengthening of micro, small, and medium enterprises, the backbone of our nation. In an archipelagic country like the Philippines, where localities vary in resources, infrastructure, culture, and tradition, providing creative industries with a better platform may serve as a way of sustaining country development. Over the years, society has developed a notion that culture and the arts are reserved for the affluent, a stark contrast to the goals of the Creative Cities Network. The network recognizes the role of creativity in breeding action and innovation, notably for the implementation of the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development. Among the commitments of city members of the network are not only broadening the opportunities for local creators and professionals in the cultural sector, but also the improvement of access to and participation in cultural life, in particular for marginalized or vulnerable groups and individuals. Sustainability is only possible if all members of society are involved. As distrusted leaders of our districts and sectors, it is our responsibility to provide opportunities for those who have fallen through the cracks of development. Supporting creative industries is a concrete means towards achieving the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development, directly addressing many of its identified goals: making cities and human settlements inclusive, safe, resilient, and sustainable as part of the Sustainable Development Goals, focuses on inclusive and sustainable urbanization, and the protection and safeguarding of the world's cultural heritage. The SDGs recognize that it is not only possible but indeed imperative that urban development should be pursued, whilst while preserving and promoting our culture and traditions. Placing both strategies under a single goal is indicative that our heritage and national identity need not suffer, giving way to modernization and the entry and propagation of other technological advancements. In fact, the proliferation of creative industries promotes the utilization of local raw materials and reinforces the necessity of preserving the natural sources of these materials, not only among creators but among the consuming public as well. In addition, creative industries do not leave the same environmental footprint as another industries, significantly reducing adverse and irreparable impact to environment, sparing communities from the unrelenting wrath of natural disasters and calamities. Promoting sustained, inclusive, and sustainable economic growth, full and productive employment, and decent work for all is another priority of SDGs. Magnified on a larger scale, success on this aspect could effectively address some of the other SDGs, particularly reducing inequality within and among countries and ending poverty in all its forms. With a population of more than 103 million and a labor force participation of 60.7%, the Philippines is in a prime position to support creative industries. The city of Baguio was recognized for its crafts and folk arts, but apart from our weaving and machinery traditions, we also take part in many of our other creative outlets across the country. We in the Cordilleras have as much pride with our ruben traditional patterns as our moro brothers and sisters who also have their own distinct textile designs. I know that many of our islands support vibrant music scenes. All over the world, Filipino musicians are renowned for their undeniable talent and versatility. Recently, many cities are showcasing Filipino talents through film festivals and other multimedia platforms. Some districts are known for their mouth-watering cuisine, while other districts inspire devotion to their religious murals and sculptures. From the mountain tops to the lowest valleys, in each and every inhabited island, the Philippines is filled with great potential from its creative sector, which must be unlocked through government support as a means to achieving sustainable growth. In all these creative industries, I have mentioned one defining characteristic would be their propensity for diversity and inclusiveness. The Sustainable Development Goals value diversification and innovation as a key to economic productivity and recognizes that everyone has the capacity of becoming productive members of society. Creativity is not exclusive to a specific gender, age, bracket, or even socioeconomic background. A study has been shown that women's participation in creative industries are better compared with traditional industries. It is also in these industries where persons with disabilities are provided avenues that allow them to contribute to the national productivity. So whether it is by promoting local products or cultural heritage, offering exciting gastronomic experiences, or by supporting the research and development programs of local universities and institutions in producing breakthrough technologies and innovations, there are creative industries that best utilize the traditions, natural assets, and democratic profile of each locality. I look into some of the practices of other newly-inducted member cities which facilitated the growth of their creative industries. Like Baguio, Madaba, Jordan enters the network this year under the crafts and folk arts film. The city is famous for its traditional mosaic-making. Not only does the city provide trainings and workshops, the Madaba Institute of Mosaic Art and Restoration even offers a diploma program on scientific methods of restoration and conservation of mosaic arts. In Gabrovo, Bulgaria, international trade fairs devoted to traditional crafts are held to provide entrepreneurs avenues to showcase their crafts and expand their market. Meanwhile, in the city of King Dao in eastern China, the city government, in partnership with other private investors, has launched a fund that would subsidize film and television ventures that would be produced in the city. Apart from the subsidies, the city's policies make for an attractive production location, which in turn creates new jobs and business opportunities for the locals. Here in the Philippines, whenever a city or a community is featured on a film, the sudden influx of tourist arrival soon follows. It shall then be the responsibility of the local government to ensure that the community is prepared to welcome these tourists with the sufficient facilities and ultimately to keep the beauty of the community preserved and protected from any possible abuse. In 2013, the Dubai Design and Fashion Council was established by the city government to develop and nurture a sustainable design industry, as well as to recognize, support, and promote designers based in the UAE and the Greater Middle East. The city of Amaranthe in Portugal, which joined the network through the music creative field, has been holding regular music festivals for decades, such as the Tamagotchi Music Festival, drawing in thousands of music lovers to the city annually, providing substantial support and exposure to the musicians, and also securing the livelihood of local business owners. In all this, the goal is supporting productive activities, decent job creation, and encouraging the formalization and the growth of micro, small, and medium enterprises. MSMEs are truly key towards sustainable and inclusive growth. Even President Rodrigo Duterte acknowledged the importance of these businesses to the national economy in his speech during the last ASEAN Conference, when he vowed to review the national budget with intention of pouring billions to the benefits of MSMEs. Unfortunately, majority of these enterprises are currently concentrated only within the three regions, NCR, Calabarzon, and Santa Luzon. To support countrywide development, we must find a way to encourage entrepreneurship in the rest of the archipelago, particularly on creative industries. In the city of Baguio, fifty-six establishments are directly devoted to crafts and folk arts, generating gross receipts of more than 57 million pesos and providing income to more than 300 households. The UNESCO Creative Cities Network began in 2004. More than ten years have passed before Baguio became the first Philippine city to be included. We are indeed honored and grateful for this recognition, but we know that recognizing one city does not fully represent the amount of talent and creativity that this nation truly has. Thriving across the country are many other creative communities, worthy of our faith and worthy of our support. I implore upon my colleagues to explore the potential of creative industries and for us to seek the necessary support and assistance of our national government for this endeavor.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Go to the Committee on Rules.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, the privilege hour having expired, I move that we extend the same for another fifteen minutes.
The privilege hour extended upon motion of the Majority Leader for another fifteen minutes.
Mr. Speaker, next to avail of the privilege hour is the distinguished lady from Sanbongga del Sur. I move that we recognize the Honorable Aurora Ceriles.
The Honorable Aurora Ceriles is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, honorable members of the House of Representatives, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I feel the need to bring to the attention of this august body and to the public the blatant injustice committed by high-ranking officials of the National Police Commission headed by the Acting Secretary of the Department of Interior and Local Government. Governor Antonio Ceriles and our family are victims of ugly politics that led to fake news all over the country, or should I say, all over the world. A week ago, a controversial news report broke out in several media outlets. On November 9, 2017, Inquirer.net made this headline, "DILG strips Governor 23 Mayors of Power Over Police for Alleged Drug Links." GMA Online News also made this headline, "Due to alleged drug links, Napolcom strips Governor 18 Mayors of Police Power." Other media outlets likewise reported the news. Is the Governor of Sanbongga del Sur really among those referred to by the Napolcom headed by the Acting Secretary of the DILG to be involved in drugs, as reported in the news? The answer is no. Of course not, never. But there was propaganda, and I believe the Napolcom head was complicit to it. In the evening of November 6, 9, 2017, Governor Ceriles received a copy of the Napolcom Resolution It was served by the Acting Regional Director of the DILG in a rush upon instruction from the National Office. For all we know, the Napolcom is headed by the Secretary of the DILG, by this time Acting Secretary Catalino Coy. Signed by the Napolcom in bank. Let me emphasize "in bank." The resolution is entitled "Withdrawing the Power of Operational Supervision and Control Over the PNP of Governor Antonio Ceriles of Sanbongga del Sur." But the Governor has no such power of operational control and supervision over the Philippine National Police units and his territorial jurisdiction. This power belongs only to the city and municipal mayors as provided for in Section 51, Letter B of RA 6975, as amended. Even an elementary grader can understand this. So how can the Napolcom in bank make a mistake about it? How can the highest official of the present DILG of this country make a wrong understanding of the very clear provision of the law entitled the DILG Act of 1990? Is this an example of gross ignorance of the law or gross incompetence? Did the Napolcom headed by Coy also copy the resolutions that are supposed to be for the mayors? Is this a product of a copy-paste? What an irresponsible act for high-ranking ranking government officials, another gross But this is not the worst. Just as we have suspected, the timing of the release of said Napolcom resolution against Governor Ceriles landed in the same news reports about narco mayors. Acting DILG Secretary Coy was Acting DILG Secretary Coy was even quoted by Enquirer.net saying the officials could no longer give orders to the respective police forces and would no longer be entitled to security detail. He said the resolutions were based on the Philippine Drug Enforcement Agency list of officials tagged as narco politicians. Coy further said that the list was only forwarded to us by the pedeia wala kaming dinagdag. Really, Mr. Coy? Coy's sweeping statements include Governor Ceriles, who was also deprived of his security detail, following the withdrawal of his deputation over PNP units in operational control and supervision. His statements include Governor Ceriles, whose case has nothing to do with drugs and who has no operation control and supervision over PNP units. How many days have lapsed since Acting DILG Secretary Coy made such a statement in the media? For eleven days now have we heard in a statement from Coy as head of the Napolcom clarifying this fake news concerning Governor Ceriles. He was the source as published. The lapse of several days without any action to correct the wrong report indicates his agreement to the publication. He wanted the fake news to remain as it is without him bothering to explain to the Filipino people for being misled and misinformed over a very serious matter. He does not seem to care for the reputation of Governor Ceriles. He does not care about the damage caused to the Ceriles family and the image of San Bongga del Sur, who prior to his glory days now was awarded as a peaceful province and ready for development jointly by the Armed Forces of the Philippines, the Philippine National Police, and DILG. A high-ranking government official such as Acting DILG Secretary Coy represents the government when he made his statement to the press. He should not be the source of fake news. But looking closely into the events as they unfolded, it appears that there were concerted efforts to bring down the name of Governor Ceriles and his family. Again, we have already suspected the timing of the release of Resolution Number Twenty Seventeen Dash Five Seven One because it came out at a time when several mayors were imposed the same sanction for alleged drug links. Of course, we do not want Governor Ceriles to be mistaken as one of the alleged narco politician because war on drugs in San Bongga del Sur started even during the time of President Gloria Macapagal Arroyo in two thousand five. The case of Governor Ceriles is not about involvement in drugs. Let me repeat, not about involvement in drugs. As stated in the Napolcom Resolution, it is about a confidential report outlining abuse of authority. Yes, it is based on a confidential report accusing Governor Ceriles of abuse of authority without giving him the opportunity to explain as to who made the report or what the content of the confidential report is all about. The Governor has no idea. Are these people even familiar with due process? As stated in the resolution, the Napolcom in bank has withdrawn the deputation of Governor Ceriles based on this report, not to mention that it is the law that gives the Governor such authority. The deputation is clear in Section Sixty-four of RA Eighty-five Fifty-One, which is entitled Automatic Deputation of Local Government Executives as Commission Representatives. I do not think Congress enacted this law only to be withdrawn on the basis of a one-sided confidential report of abuse of authority, without even disclosing the authority of the one conducting the investigation against the Governor and how it was being conducted. So I hope, Mr. Speaker, members of this august body, the present Napolcom headed by the Acting Secretary of the DILG does not support or subscribe to political intrigues. It was brought to my attention that an ambitious politician of San Bongga del Sur questioned the PNP Provincial Command why this representation and to include my son, who is the Vice-Governor, Ace Ceriles, were not stripped of their police escort. When explained to that person the substance of the resolution or the rather fake news, she was quoted saying, "Para meron na kung may report sa' tas". This is again another disturbance of the PNP operation. To those who are using power to further their political ambitions, do not paint San Bongga del Sur as a narco province just because you do not like the Ceriles leadership. If you really love the province, destruction of its name and image should never be a medium of your ambitions. Please be informed and remember this. Governor Ceriles is a strong advocate of education. In our joint effort, we established a state college and brought tertiary education to all municipalities in the province. Governor Ceriles authored the establishment of almost all national high schools in his congressional district when he was still Congressman. San Bongga del Sur, under the leadership of Governor Ceriles, is the only province that has a sports academy that produce good athletes who became champions in the country in many fields of sports. San Bongga del Sur, under the leadership of Governor Ceriles, is also very active in Boy Scouts of the Philippines and a multi-awardee of special awards. Governor Ceriles himself is a national figure of the organization. There are just some of his programs for the children and the youth of the province, programs that will drive them away from illegal drugs, para hindi magig addict, as Governor Ceriles wants them to be good citizens of this country. For your ill-intention of portraying, associating, and linking Governor Ceriles to drugs, shame on you. You are a disgrace to the province of San Bongga del Sur. You better say something or explain this case of misinformation or disinformation, DILG Acting Secretary Coy. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Ceriles to the Committee on Rules.
Any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Next to speak, Mr. Speaker, is the Honorable Franz Castro. I move that the lady be recognized.
The Honorable Franz Castro is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. November twenty, nineteen fifty-nine, the UN General Assembly adopted the Declaration of the Rights of the Child. At the same date, in nineteen eighty-nine, the UN General Assembly also adopted the Convention of the Rights of the Child. Since nineteen fifty-four, six-three years ago, we have been celebrating the United Nations Universal Children's Day every twentieth of November to promote international togetherness, awareness among children worldwide, and improving children's welfare. Since nineteen ninety, Universal Children's Day also marks the anniversary of the date. The UN General Assembly adopted both the Declaration and the Convention of the Children's Rights. This year, the theme of the celebration is Twenty Seventeen. It's a kids' takeover where we empower children to support millions of their peers who are unschooled, unprotected, and uprooted. It's high time that we check how do we rate as a nation in the promotion and the protection of the rights of the welfare of the Filipino children, specifically their right to education.
Sa ilalim ng pamahalaan Duterte, tumitindi ang militarisasyon, lalo na ng mapasailalim ang buong Mindanao sa batas militar. Lubhang apektado nitong operasyon ng mga paaralang lumad, na noon pa man ay inatakin na mga militar dahil sa bisa ng DEEPED Order Number Two Two One, Series of Twenty Thirteen, na nagpapahintulot sa pagkampo ng mga militar sa mga paaralan. Sa loob ng halos anim na buwan, naitala ang mga kaso ng pamamaslang sa mga leader lumad, kabataan, walang haba sa pambobomba sa mga komunidad, harassment, at pananakot sa mga guro ng mga paaralang lumad, at iba pang forma ng paglabag sa karapatang pantao. Kabilang si Obelio Bayaw, isang manobo at mag-aaral sa salugpungan Community Learning Center, sa walang awang pinaslang ng mga militar at grupo paramilitar. Si Bayaw ay nakatira sa komunidad at bulubunduki ng pantaron range sa Talaingo, Davao del Norte, kung saan aktibus yang lumalahok sa pagtutol at paglaban sa mga dambohalang kumpanya na gustong dambungin ang kanilang mga lupang ninuno. Higit pang nagpalakas ng loob ng AFP ang pagabanta ng Pangulo na bobombahin ang mga paaralang lumad. Kinakasangkapan din ang AFP ang mga lokal na opisina ng DEEPED at LGU sa Mindanao sa pagpasara sa mga paaralang lumad. Sa kasalukuyan, araw-araw na binobomba ng mga militar ang mga komunidad ng lumad. Halos walang pinagkaiba sa pambobombang ginawa nila sa Marawi. Lantad ang labis na pagkasira ng mga kabundukan at mga ari-arian ng mga mamayan. Lumikas din sa mga komunidad at naantala ang operasyon ng mga paaralang apektado. Sa datos ng Save Our Schools Network, tinatayang two hundred lumad schools sa Mindanao, eighty-nine dito ay isinara at hindi na makapagoperate dahil sa umano'y militar harassment. Kasalukuyang nakakampo ang mahigit na three hundred na lumad at mga miembro ng Save Our Schools Network sa harap ng DEEPED Central Office, Pasig City. Upang igiit ang paikipag-usap kay Sekretary Leonor Biones at gumawa siya ng mga konkretong akbang upang mabigyang solusyon ang militarisasyon sa kanilang mga paaralan at mga komunidad. At ang balita nga natin, kailangan pa raw ng military permit ng mga school ng mga lumad para ito ay makapagproseso para sa DEEPED permit. DEEPED's leadership has yet to condemn AFP attacks on lumad schools and to investigate cases of connivance between DEEPED and Regional Office, AFP, and LGUs upon closing down lumad schools. Also, I support their demand for DEEPED to immediately grant permit to operate and certificate of recognition on all lumad schools. This representation underscores the urgency of these demands as I fear for the lives of the lumad children. President Duterte's threat to hound down progressive groups would only intensify attacks in communities of national minority groups who are often targeted by the Oplan Kapayapaan, the government's counterinsurgency campaign. We will not allow another Marawi tragedy in North Cotobato and other communities in Mindanao. We must join the lumads and moros in calling for the immediate end of aerial bombings and shelling of their communities to ultimately help bring them back home.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Castro to the Committee on Rules.
Any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, next to speak is the gentleman from the First District of Lanau del Norte. I move that you recognize the Honorable Muhammad Khalid Dimaporo.
The Honorable Muhammad Khalid Dimaporo is hereby recognized.
Ausubilahim na siyatan irahim, bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Speaker, colleagues, assalamualaikum raka'matullahi barakatuh. Elation is probably one of the words to describe the nation's sentiment when terrorist leaders Isnilon, Hapilon, and Omar Maute were reported killed in their attempt to escape last October sixteen. When DND Secretary Lorenzana confirmed the reports that Hapilon and Omar Maute have been killed, President Duterte then declared Marawi City liberated. In Lanau del Norte, the provincial governor and her twenty-two mayors have been working tirelessly in support of our AFP and PNP in preventing the escape or spillover of terrorists from Lanau del Sur into Lanau del Norte and Iligan City. Likewise, they have been doing what they can to assist in the management of evacuation centers. That feeling of elation in the province of Lanau del Norte. That feeling of elation in the province of Lanau del Norte when we heard the news of Hapilon and Omar Maute being killed quickly spread. Finally, the battle for Marawi was soon to end. The evacuees can return home. Martial law will be lifted and normalcy will return to the province and the region. The liberation of Marawi is a critical achievement of the Duterte administration. A military achievement because Malacanyang has succeeded in neutralizing the ISIS terrorist leadership and in effect its growth and operational capability to conduct terror strikes in key cities of our republic. Secondly, the success in Marawi is a political achievement for Malacanyang because it exemplifies the political will of the president to rid Mindanao of its security threats and provide Mindanawans the promise that we've been longing for. A peaceful environment for our future generations to build on and prosper. Peace and security is a basic economic foundation for development. This would be the greatest legacy for his countrymen in the South should he achieve it. So, on behalf of my province, the land of beauty and bounty, Lanau del Norte, this representation extends our sincere congratulations to President Rodrigo Rua Duterte in his administration's accomplishment of annihilating the threat of terrorists in the Lanau region. In the same manner, we would like to acknowledge the courage and sacrifice of our security forces, the men and women of the AFP and PNP who fought in Marawi under the leadership of DND Secretary Lorenzana, Chief of Staff General Anjo, and Chief PNP De La Rosa. To the brave members of Marines, Rangers, SAF, and other elements of our security forces, daghang salamat sa inyong sakripisyo para sa atong nasod. Isnilon Hapilon and his cohorts, the Maute Brothers, threatened to terrorize Filipino society. You are our government's apt response against terrorism that they will ultimately meet their demise. Your actions sends a message to the Filipino people that they can have faith in their security forces to provide our communities with protection. For this, the people of Lanau del Norte are truly grateful. The Battle of Marawi may have been won, but our fight against terrorism continues. In the aftermath of the conflict, we have to look back at its course. How did terrorism get a foothold in our country? Specifically, the autonomous region in Muslim Mindanao. I'm sure there will be an abundance of studies regarding terrorism in the Philippines, but I'd like to place on record my concerns as a representative and former local official of Lanau del Norte. I see three areas of concern in the region. The PNP and local governments, the thin line between insurgency and terrorism, and the need to provide additional budgetary support to our military. First, in regards to the PNP and local governance, President Duterte was correct in declaring martial law to subdue the terrorists in Lanau del Sur because it is only the military that has the power to demand respect for the government in the ARMM territory. The number of guns seized by the military gives a glimpse of the proliferation of high-powered firearms in the armed region. More than 400 high-powered firearms were seized by the AFP. If we do an inventory of the PNP's firearms in the province of Lanau del Sur, I am sure you will find that the police are outgunned and incapacitated to conduct their duty in a region where terrorists and insurgents thrive. People think that the affairs of the armed affect only the people living in the ARMM provinces. What our experience with the Maute group shows that if the ARMM is left unchecked, the peace and order situation cannot affect more than just the region and spill over to the rest of the country. Malacanyang was surprised with the number of firearms that they found in Marawi. But the truth is, to locals, that's nothing new. With the non-existence of police presence in the area, civilians are left to defend themselves. Large Maranal families or clans arm themselves and police themselves through cultural norms. What the national government should do in the aftermath of conflict is restore the PNP's legitimacy over public safety in Marawi City. In Lanau del Norte, we hear stories of city police directors from Marawi City. Stories of how the MILF came to the Marawi City Police Station and demanded the release of criminals detained by the city police director. They were released without a fight. Stories of armed group upset at the city director, so they went to the city police station and stripped him of his firearms just to embarrass him. Stories of a Taosug police director that did his best to combat drug personalities in Marawi City. When the situation turned hostile, he called for help from the region. The region did not support him because of intervening political powers leading to his demise. The police have a bad reputation in the ARMM, and this should be corrected to root out the ideology of terrorism from Muslim communities. There should be a clear felt presence of state police powers. We should look into the role of the police in terms of local governance and identify why they failed in the armed. Do they need more personnel? Do they need more equipment? If so, our police in the ARMM should be provided with the necessary support being our frontline defense in the war against terror in the Philippines. In addition, we need to look into the long-term effects of an autonomous government in terms of public safety. Does the regional government have the capability to provide public safety with the existence of insurgents and terrorist organizations? Would the national government be more effective if the police remained under national control and not under the control of the autonomous government? These questions must be addressed in Congress so we can get a better understanding and finding a solution to fight terrorism. The role of the PNP should be thoroughly scrutinized when discussing the Bangsamoro Basic Law and legislating a Bangsamoro Police Force. Second, in regards to the thin line between insurgency and terrorism. Terrorism has been present in our country for decades. They have been curiously been active since the peace agreement with the MILF in 1998. Prior to the Battle of Marawi, the nation is already aware of the presence of terrorists. The nation is not new to kidnappings and beheadings. We've seen that over the years from the Abu Sayyaf. The nation is not new to bombings. Zamboanga, Iligan, Kageyan di Oro, Davao, all have been hit by bombs over the years. What is new to the nation is the participation of a foreign terrorist organization to infiltrate and take over a city. This is ISIS, and what sets it apart from other terrorist organizations. ISIS gained prominence when they drove out the Iraqi government forces in western Iraq and captured the city of Mosul. They declared themselves a worldwide caliphate, an Islamic state with a self-imposed military authority over all Muslims nationwide. And ISIS entered the Philippines through Isnilon Hapilon and the Abu Sayyaf. On July 2014, the previous administration, the Abu Sayyaf leader Isnilon Hapilon, swore allegiance to Abu Bakr al-Baghdadi, the leader of ISIS. Beginning September 2014, the Abu Sayyaf started operating in the name of ISIS. But before ISIS, how did terrorism rise in Mindanao? It is worthwhile to note that Hapilon and the Mautes can be connected to the Moro revolutionary forces. Isnilon Hapilon started with the Moro National Liberation Front in 1985. He became the spokesperson of Commander Barahama Sali in 1992. It was when Commander Sali was killed in 1994 that he joined the Abu Sayyaf. He quickly rose to the ranks and became one of their leaders. Likewise, the Maute's groups, the Maute group's roots can be traced to the MILF. The father of the Maute group, Kayamora Maute, was a senior official of the MILF. And his wife, Farhana, is directly related to the late MILF Vice Chairman for Military Affairs, Alim Abdul Aziz Mimbantas. Butik is a known stronghold of the MILF and was the headquarters of the Maute group. The Maute brothers started as members of the MILF and branched off to create their own group, Daula Islamia, which is reportedly connected to Jemaya Islamia, another terrorist organization linked to Al Qaeda. Although both Hapilon and the Maute group can be connected to the Moro rebel groups, this does not necessarily mean that the Moro rebels are linked to terrorists. Instead, it illustrates that they play a significant role in controlling the proliferation of more terror groups in the proposed Bangsamoro territory. The MILF plays an important role in the fight against terrorism because they need to police their members. Hapilon and the Mautes were once Moro rebel combatants. They have their respective reasons for leaving the Moro rebellion. Unlike a professional organization like the AFP, the MILF does not have a structured control on their members. One of the foreseen threats in the war against terror in the Philippines is the movement of the MILF combatants out of the MILF and joining or creating terror organizations. This must be properly addressed when tackling the Bangsamoro Basic Law. When peace was crafted with the MNLF, some of its members transferred to the MILF. Likewise, when we finalize peace with the MILF, we need to ensure that there will be no transfer of their combatants to ISIS-affiliated organizations and that all their members and firearms can be accounted for and monitored. Third, in regards to augmenting the budget of the military, we need to properly account the AFP experience when they battled the terrorists in Marawi. From what I gathered through social media sources, the battle in Marawi progressed as follows. On May 2017, the AFP received confirmed intelligence that Hapilon is in Marawi. They then mobilized to infiltrate his safe house and capture this internationally recognized wanted terrorist. The capture of Hapilon failed because the AFP did not anticipate reinforcements from the Maute group who were already hiding in Marawi City. So, on May 23, fighting between the military and local terrorists broke out. The terror groups initiated sporadic raising of buildings and killing of civilians. Among the buildings burned were the Marawi Police Station, Land Bank, Marawi City Jail, Danselan College, and other government and also private institutions there in the city. By the end of the day, May 23, 2017, President Duterte declared martial law for the island of Mindanao while on official trip in Russia. Upon his return to Manila, a report was required by Congress, a report as required by the 1987 Constitution was given to Congress and was not rejected by the legislative body. Simultaneously, the military sent reinforcements to Marawi and pushed back the terrorists towards the northeastern side of the city, containing them on the opposing side of the Agus River from the AFP's Camp Ranau. With three bridges connecting the two sides of the Agus River, the three bridges being Balui Bridge, Bayabaw Bridge, and Masio Bridge, they became the critical points of control and were very difficult for government forces to overcome because of sniper fire, RPGs, and IEDs from the terrorists. The initial estimated date to liberate Marawi was in the first half of June 2017, before the president's State of the Nation address. But because of unforeseen difficulties in the battlefield, the administration returned to Congress to extend martial law until December 2017. Congress approved the extension. By September, the three bridges were under government control. Mapandi Bridge was captured on July 20, Bayabaw Bridge on September 1, and Masio Bridge on September 24. The conflict area became smaller and smaller, and October 16, Isnilon Hapilon and Omar Maute were killed in an attempt to escape. The following day, October 17, President Duterte declared Marawi City liberated. And on October 23, DND Secretary Lorenzana announced the end of combat operations in Marawi. A lot can be learned from the Battle of Marawi, which is why Congress should be debriefed on the military's success. We should be given a detailed blow-by-blow presentation of what our men experienced in their fight against terrorists, which is why I filed a resolution that Congress be given a detailed account of what happened in Marawi. One reason to discuss it in the committee is because a lot of criticism has been given to the military to the military by those directly affected by the war in Marawi, especially since the fighting took five months. From my understanding, the military tried their very best to adhere to the rules of combat and proceed with their operational offensives while respecting human rights. Unfortunately, with the release of the Amnesty International Report, "The Battle of Marawi: Death and Destruction in the Philippines", the AFP is alleged to have violated human rights. We should place it on public record how the military conducted itself in Marawi so that the people through the House of Representatives can hear the side of the military in response to the Amnesty International Report. Another reason we need a detailed account of what happened in Marawi is because I have often heard that our military has been fighting against the odds, that they are poorly equipped or don't have the same tactical support that their ASEAN counterparts have. It has been argued that the military has been underfunded for the last 50 years. Currently, we are legislating an amount of 1% of our GDP while our neighbors spend 2% of their GDP. Having a detailed account of what happened in Marawi could help us understand and maybe even justify an increase in military spending for the Philippines. In closing, once again, I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate our president and the security forces of the Republic of the Philippines for their success in Marawi. The Battle of Marawi has clearly been won, but the war is far from over. The fight against terrorism is now shifting from a military response to good governance. Terrorism is not a people. It is not embedded in religion, but an ideology in which we in Congress must legislate laws and the budgetary support needed to win the hearts of those marginalized and vulnerable in our society and end the recruitment of our youth which may blossom into a new generation of insurgents and terrorists in the future. One of the laws that must be delivered is the Bangsamoro Basic Law. We are all in agreement in the Lanau region that the non-passage of the Bangsamoro Basic Law will lead to further deterioration of security and stability in Mindanao. But let me place it on record and warn the public today that the passage of the Bangsamoro Basic Law can either be part of the solution in the war against terror in the Philippines or make it worse by propagating the same socioeconomic conditions which led to the entry of ISIS, of the ISIS ideology inside the ARMM. Devolving the PNP and the DEEPED to the Bangsamoro government should be properly deliberated in the House committees in lieu of the government's war against terrorism. Restricting movement of the AFP in the Bangsamoro territory as stipulated in Article 11, Section 18 of House Bill 6475, the Bangsamoro Basic Law should be scrutinized because it may hamper our AFP's ability to fight terrorism in the Bangsamoro part of Mindanao. All of this will be properly addressed when the House takes up the Bangsamoro Basic Law in the weeks to come. And for that, for now, I thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the privilege to speak tonight. Colleagues, may God guide us and bless our republic with peace and prosperity. Assalamualaikum rabbatullahi barakatuh.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Dimaporo to the Committee on Rules.
Any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the privilege of our...
Any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer, or we transmit immediately to the Senate the bills that we have just approved on third reading.
Any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, last October 2, 2017, Representative CT Turabin Hataman delivered a speech declaring her resignation as a member of the House of Representatives for the 17th Congress. On October 4, 2017, Representative Hataman formally tendered her resignation through a letter addressed to the Honorable Speaker Pantalyon Alvarez. In a letter dated October 23, 2017, Speaker Pantalyon Alvarez regretfully accepted the resignation of Representative Hataman. Mister Speaker, in view of the foregoing, I move that we accept the resignation of Representative CT Dalaya Turabin Hataman of Amin Partilis and instruct the Secretary-General to drop from the role of members of the House of Representatives Representative Turabin Hataman.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The resignation of Representative CT Dalaya Turabin Hataman of Amin Partilis is hereby accepted. The Secretary-General is instructed to drop from the role of members of the House of Representatives Representative Turabin Hataman.
Mister Speaker, I move that we instruct the Secretary-General to duly inform the Commission on Elections of the acceptance of the resignation of Representative Turabin Hataman.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary-General is hereby instructed to duly inform the Commission on Elections of the acceptance of the resignation of Representative Turabin Hataman.
Mister Speaker, in the interest of the people of the Lawn District of Batanes, in view of the demise of their representative Henedina Abad, I move that we designate Representative Feliciano Belmonte Jr. of the 4th District of Quezon City as caretaker of the Lawn District of Batanes.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we adjourn until Tuesday, November 21, 2017 at 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Session is adjourned to resume on Tuesday at 4:00 PM in the afternoon.